Good evening and welcome to the August 22 North Idaho Board of Trustees Meeting. Would you all please rise for the Pledge Allegiance? Thank you Board. I trust you all had a great summer. We took July off. It's nice to see everybody back. Before we continue, Trustee Van Dooch, I don't remember if I asked you to do the mission statement last time, but you were pretty good at it. Want to do it again?
Okie dokie. Be a useful pot as they say. Mission Statement: North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We do have a quorum this evening. I don't know if we have any special guests, do we? All of you are special, but I don't think we have any special special. Oh, okay, no public comment. Alright, thank you. Well, that takes us directly to celebrating success. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I wanted to change the agenda just a little bit to accommodate our wonderful students that need to catch a boat. Now, the deal is if I change the agenda, I get to go with them and so, so one of you has to stand up and take over. So Board, if you wouldn't mind, we could change the agenda and move the ASNIC report up. Is that fine with everyone?
Something about a cruise or something?
Yes. Alright, please.
How's that go? What's in it for us?
Oh, Madam Chair, Trustees, Dr. McLennan, guests. Going to be honest, I practiced that awhile. Can I get that down? First off, I'm so excited to be here representing the students this semester, or year. It's a great honor and I'm not taking it lightly. So, ASNIC started training last week. It was awesome. We got to reconnect with so many of our students. A lot of them were in California. One was fighting fires all over Washington, which was pretty amazing to hear stories from that. But we were able to reconnect and go over what we wanted to see this semester, what our purpose is. And we actually came up with a small purpose statement. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read that. It says, "ASNIC is dedicated to improving student success through student involvement and communication." So, the reason we really focused on the involvement and communication is when we were all talking about what we wanted to see at NIC this semester, those two things just kept on highlighting themselves. And so, we actually started that this summer. I had the opportunity with our Vice President Scott Kennedy to meet with many of the President's Cabinet and talk about their goals for the upcoming year and then how ASNIC can fit into those goals. It was great to connect with so many of you and hear what ASNIC can do, and there's a lot. So, it's pretty amazing to know that the students have such a big part. And then I was able to talk with Dr. McLennan. I'm excited because I get to be a part, get to join President's Cabinet once a month and talk with them. So, that'll be great. Another opportunity for us to connect. So, I'm excited about that and keep each other updated. Next, over the summer, we had the opportunity to be a part of orientation that Jess put on, which was amazing. ASNIC was at every orientation. We were able to talk with students and connect, tell them how to be involved, which is a great opportunity to show them why being involved is important. So, that was, we were very thankful for that. And then, the other thing that we really worked on this summer was we wanted to focus on involvement and communication, which I said, but we wanted to do that by collaborating with all of NIC, with all of the different groups. So, we worked out a top-ten events banner. And we're going to have outdoor pursuits events and theater events, or music events, and just all-around campus events that we're hoping to, and it'll be banners that'll be hung up so that students can look at one centralized spot and see that, oh, this event's going on this weekend. We're hoping to have an incentive. If you go to all ten, then you get this prize. So, it's kind of our way to bring all of campus together because we know student government isn't for everybody, but there is something here for everybody at NIC. So, just opening up that route for students to get involved. So, be looking, be on the lookout for that. It'll be coming up in the next few weeks. So, and then our next is the cruise that we've been working on, which is tonight. So, we got, we booked a cruise that will go around Lake Coeur d'Alene. So, all the new students, we're expecting around 250 to 300 students to attend. So, we're pretty excited about that. We also had the day of welcome, which was, got to wear this. And I actually, I brought a few extra for the trustees.
Yeah, I love those shirts.
They're probably not the right size because most of the students took all the right sizes.
That's alright. That's okay.
But I got a few extra.
We'll take whatever you give us. That's wonderful. Thank you. No.
So, that was my, to hand out that. But, that's pretty much all we have for updates. And yeah, and thank you for letting me go first so I could go and-
Thank you Peter, it's a great report. Board, do you have any questions for him?
Just thank you for the shirt and the report. Good job.
Peter, it's impressive that you got off to such a start. I mean, you obviously are taking your leadership role seriously and so is your fellow students. So, I congratulate you on that. That's good. Looking forward to seeing how you proceed with those things.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Have a great time tonight.
Awesome.
Tell the students that we wish them a lot of fun.
Alright, we will do that.
Bye-bye. Alright, Board, we'll go back to our regular schedule on the agenda. So, that takes us to celebrating success. The NIC, oh, I'm sorry.
Need to review minutes.
Oh, I didn't go back to the regular schedule. Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if there's any changes, please note that. If none, we'll accept them as are. Alright, we will accept the minutes. And we have no public comment tonight, and so that takes us to celebrating success. NIC softball and golf teams. Al Williams, Don Don Williams, and Russell Grove. We really like seeing you guys come and speak.
Russell's golfing and last I heard, he's like in the top handful right now in the tournament he's in.
So, it's just you tonight, Al?
It is.
I was looking for Don Don. I didn't see her. Okay.
Well, actually, welcome. Thank you for having us up here, Madam Chair, members of the Board, President McLennan. It's always an honor to come here and talk about athletics and you are right. Russell Grove is competing in the tournament in Wallowala and he was leading as of yesterday and hopefully he will bring it home. And Don Don Williams is traveling. She's bringing her daughter to the University of Montana where she's playing softball. So, they are both gone for good reasons.
Yeah.
But I do have some distinguished guests, but before I begin, I am going to show a little video which has some pictures from the spring events, and then we have a little video at the very end. So, there's no audio to begin with, but I can talk a little bit and tell you what that about as we watch this. If I can direct your attention there to the video here. These are shots from our championship team for the golf team as well as softball team. For the men's golf team, this is their back-to-back championship. Tournament was played at the Apple Valley Course over in Yakima. So, these are just pictures that came off the NWAAC website. And Maddie Brown was the champion for the medalist for the women. And we have our Player of the Year, who we'll bring it up here later, from the softball program. It's not a bad record there with the 53. It's not bad at all. We're also recognized as the Coaching Staff of the Year by both the NWAAC and All-American by the NWAAC as well, too. Maddie Mott will be speaking later. We'll bring her up. Sean Lang is going to be the, he'll be a golfer for the University of Idaho starting in the fall season. That's Sean there. Maddie Brown, not sure where she's going. I think she's going to be at Western Washington competing for them as well, too. So, we should have our video coming up, which is the final play from the championship event, which we hosted at the Spokane Dwight Merkel Stadium over there, Northwest Boulevard in Spokane. So, it was nice to have a championship on our home field.
Let's do two. Swing and a jam shot and a diving play made! And that's the ballgame! That's the tournament! And that is a championship for North Idaho! As they celebrate out in the circle, a final score of eight to five. LCC fought valiantly all the way through the B bracket. But in the end, North Idaho was just too much to handle as they claimed the 2018 NWAAC Softball Championship. A big congratulations to all athletes.
That's awesome.
We swept the region with all honors. We had the Coaching Staff of the Year. We had the East Region Most Valuable Player. We had the East Region Player of the Year. And then we had Maddie Mott as the NWAAC Softball Player of the Year. So, I'd like to bring up Maddie Mott. Maddie comes to us from Gladstone, Oregon. And she'll be joined by Ashlyn Nguyen. Ashlyn's from Pocatello, Idaho. She was All-Region. And Don Don's not here now, but I do want to welcome a new member of our staff, Jordan McCracken from Lake City High School, just joined us. She played softball at Utah State University. So, I want to welcome her as well, too.
Welcome.
So, these ladies will come up. Maddie Mott first, who was the NWAAC All-American and Player of the Year. So, I'd like to have firstly a few words about last year's experience.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Maddie Mott. I'm a pitcher from the video, I guess. I'm a biology major pursuing a career in the medical field as a physician's assistant. And, you go.
I'm Ashlyn. I'm from Pocatello, Idaho. I'm a shortstop, third baseman, but last year I played outfield. I'm an education major. I haven't decided yet between elementary or high school and I want to coach when I'm older. So, and last year, I think when we started, we knew that we had a pretty good team chemistry from the beginning, but it was a grind. Like, I'm not going to lie, we had some hard times and going through the winter and putting in so much work, and the fall and putting in so much work, and learning how our team dynamic and our chemistry worked. And then in February, was it February?
Yeah.
We went to Florida and we got to compete in Florida and we won all six games we played in Florida. And I think that was like the turning point for our team. We were like, we can do this this year. Like, we can win a championship and bring North Idaho like the first one. So, I think from then on, everyone bought into it that we could be a championship team. And it was like the most exciting experience of my life and I really want to do it again this year.
Yeah, so, once we got back from Florida, we just started grinding in the facility, hitting the weight room, doing extra conditioning. Just from that went on having a championship mindset and getting 1% better every day in practice. And then that day in May when all of our hard work paid off, it was just like amazing. And I know we all watched the video like over and over again. But then the goal is to be back-to-back champions this year. So, we've upped our weight routine with our new coach. So, instead of having one 6:00 AM weights workout a week, we have three 6:00 AM weight workouts on top of all of our conditioning. And pitchers practice an hour and a half on top of the team practice, two and a half hours a day. So, it's like four, four and a half hours every day on top of the weights. And then also staying committed to our academics in the classroom. We haven't decided what our team goal of our GPA is going to be, but it's probably going to be around the 3.0 average. Definitely increasing it from last year.
Ladies, we're so incredibly proud of you and your team and we love to talk to our students. So, I'm going to ask the Board if they have any questions or comments.
From your core of the team from last year, how many are returning?
Eight.
Eight of them. So, there's an old line I read or saw somewhere that says, "Hard work beats talent when talent doesn't work hard." But when talent works hard, you can do just about anything. You guys found that out last year. So, keep working hard and good things will happen.
Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
You know, I don't know if you realize this, but when you do what you do, you bring pride to not just your fellow students, but to this entire institution and to this city. So, thank you very much for all of that. We all get really excited about what you do. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else on this end? No? Well, I've had a couple of quick questions. I've forgotten already where you said you're transferring to. So, Maddie, right?
Yes.
Where did you say you're transferring to?
Don't know. It's undecided.
Undecided, but you're definitely transferring?
Yeah, it's in the works.
They're both freshmen. They're Mac.
Oh, I didn't pay attention to that. Okay. Okay. So, you're still kicking it around what you might do?
Yes.
Okay, good. We get to keep you. Now, Al, do you, most of the athletes, do they transfer on?
Most of our athletes, 60% of our athletes move on to four-year schools to play. Maddie turned down several scholarships. Maddie's a 4.0 student, Player of the Year, but wants to stay because she loves NIC so much and wants to get that back-to-back title.
Good girl.
Put her in the classroom and on the field. Not often you get the Player of the Year to return and turn down offers, but with her degree, she gets several opportunities. And so, she wants to wait, play one more year here and then figure out what's best for her. She's got several opportunities, as you can imagine, academically as well as on the field.
Well, I'm very impressed, especially with that weight room workout. I couldn't even get through one. Golly, that's great. We love hearing from you. Thank you so much and congratulations on all your achievements. And we'll be right behind you this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The team was ranked number one in every poll in the NWAAC and they finished the season on a 23-game winning streak. So, the best is yet to come.
Can I just make one question?
Yes, certainly.
So, when we, when we get back to the tournament, the championship tournament this year, I didn't say if, when, I'd really encourage the Board, if you want to see something, have a lot of fun, they are, it's just, it's a, what, a three-day tournament, I think?
Four-day tournament.
Four-day tournament. And it's just exciting.
Yes. We need to make that commitment. I will. That'll be fun.
Dwight Merkel Field, right there on Northwest Boulevard, out there in Spokane by the VA Hospital.
Oh, we know right where that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Happy to host and we'll probably get a bye the first round.
So, as usual, we'll be co-hosting it then, did you say?
We are co-hosting it with Spokane for one more year and then we'll put a bid in and hopefully host it for the next three years. So, we'll see what happens.
Where would we, we'd play right at Memorial then? Would we need more than one field?
We would need more than one field. That's a four-field facility there, so it'd be tough to hold it here in town. But it's nice right there at Dwight Merkel Stadium. It feels like home, close enough, and our fans can come and watch us partake. So, we co-host that with Spokane and then the Spokane Region Sports Commission.
I was wondering, because I didn't think you'd want to be maybe spread out all across town with the fields.
Once field is enough. And we televise it with our IT team here on our campus. They do a great job of doing all the video broadcasts. They highlight all four fields and do a real nice job with four cameras on the main field, but it's a nice presentation. So, thanks for our IT team for putting that on for us. So, now I want to bring in members of our golf team. Our golf team, like I mentioned earlier in the video, was back-to-back champions. I want to bring in three members from our golf team. Want to bring up Jesse Henderson. He's from Farmington, Utah. Braxton Stewart from Montpelier, Idaho. And Ben Harvey from Liverpool, United Kingdom. So, they're bringing their trophies with back-to-back champions. So, they can say a few words.
Welcome.
Welcome. Not welcome, sorry. Thank you for welcoming us. My name is Braxton Stewart. This is Jesse Henderson and this is Ben Harvey. And yeah, we're the returning sophomores that were on the traveling team for NIC. And yeah, we had a pretty crazy, we had a pretty fun season. It was fun to be a part of, for sure. Coming down the stretch at NWAAC, we were down eight strokes. We were down nine strokes with nine holes to play, which is, you know, it's a substantial amount, for sure, with only nine holes left to play. Usually, a one-strout lead as well, like wins a tournament, you know? And so, yeah, I was actually, I was playing with the kid, one of the kids I was playing with was on the leading team. And he was like, yeah, if we blow this lead, our coach will be so mad. And I kind of got like, I kind of got chills because I knew kind of like the kids that were behind me had the, you know, definitely had the power to do that, you know? And so, we came down to the very end and we were down by one. And Sean, who was our number one, who is now at U of I, he made a, it was like a 10-foot putt to get us into the playoff. And I remember Ben wasn't, couldn't even watch it. Ben was off in the distance laying down. This is so stressful, you know, it all comes down to one person. Yeah, it was a, it was a super fun season and we have a lot of freshmen this year. So, we definitely have a lot of talent coming up and we definitely have the potential to do it again, I think, for sure.
That's just amazing. That's wonderful. What course do you practice at?
We practice at Avondale mostly, but there's a couple of other courses in the area that we go to. But Avondale's definitely, we're there probably 90% of the time.
It's a great course.
Yeah, definitely.
Really hip. Board, do you have questions?
Well, one of our Board members is an avid golfer and he probably would like some lessons from you.
Yeah, anytime.
He probably needs some lessons from you.
I quit being coachable a long time ago.
You know, I have to say, as much as everyone loves football, it's alright for me. But golf seems the smart direction to go for young athletes today. So, I'm so excited for all of you and for what your careers are ahead of you. Are any of you going to pursue it professionally?
I think we all would, you know, kind of like to. There's like, it's always kind of like off in the distance, you know? Like, we're kind of just living like what we're doing right now, but, you know, I think anyone, no one would be, turn anything like that down, for sure.
We'll be watching you guys. We'll look for you on TV.
Yeah.
You're awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Board, any other?
Ben's one of our three international students that we still have.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, go ahead, Ben. Tell us.
Hi, my name's Ben. As Al said, I'm from Liverpool in England. My story of how I got here was a bit of a strange one. And I'm just going to say, if somebody doesn't understand the word I say, I'm sorry. A lot of people don't understand me. But yeah, a couple of years ago, I didn't really know what I was going to do in my life because England's education system isn't exactly the best in the world. But I went, I was on the golf team at my college because that's how England's education system works. I won a couple of events there. My coach there said I should look to come into the States. So, me and my dad set out to look for a good place for me to go. We didn't even know where the junior college was before we contacted this place. But yeah, we messaged Russell. Had a few phone calls and he seemed nice enough. Had a few negotiations, but luckily I've been gifted this opportunity to come here. And luckily, well, luckily, with lots of hard work, we brought home the championship. And then, as Braxton said, got loads of new freshmen on the team. So, hopefully we can bring the win again. Definitely got the firepower, too. Just putting it into action when it's needed. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Welcome to the States. We're glad you're here and we're glad you chose North Idaho College.
My pleasure.
That is fun. What a great story. Jesse, did you want to speak?
Sure. So, I chose to come to North Idaho because Russell sent me an email and I didn't really know what I was going to do because I had a couple of like walk-on offers back home, but it was nothing really like all that exciting. I probably wouldn't play. So, when he sent it to me, I came up here and I, like, I fell in love with this place. I love the lakes. It's nothing like back home at all.
Where's back home?
Farmington, Utah.
Okay.
So, it's desert. We live right, we're the closest city to the lake. So, it really stinks a lot of the time.
Your hometown can't see this, so it's okay.
Yeah, they're fine. I love it there, but-
Oh, they can. Okay, you're going to have to change the subject.
And Russ, he felt like he could offer more than most of the other coaches could. Since he's such a good player himself, I thought I could learn more from him than anyone else. And hopefully, he saw me enough that I can go back and play home somewhere because that's what I want to do. So.
That's wonderful. Board, questions? Go ahead, Joe.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to all of our student athletes and our coaches. And then to Al, you're doing a great job and it seems like NIC's been good for the NWAAC and the NWAAC's been good for NIC.
They're getting used to seeing us walking off with trophies.
Yes, certainly.
Trustee Dunlap, and they're not, they're not that happy with our role in the NWAAC.
Perfect. That's the way we like it.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I want to repeat kind of what I said to the members of the softball team. You may not realize it sometimes. You guys get pretty excited about what you do because you enjoy doing it. You enjoy winning. You enjoy the camaraderie. But the community is watching, always. It may not seem that way, but you bring a lot of pride to this institution. And I don't know that you sometimes understand the great honor that you bring to us when you, especially when you win back-to-back trophies and you're ready to do it again. So, thank you very much for all of that. And Ben, I wanted to ask you, the people over here kind of talk funny. You getting used to it?
Yeah, it's just, it was a language barrier at the start. Every time I'd speak, people would just be like, what? What did you say? But over time, I've just learned to like slow down how I'm speaking. Me, I have lost a bit of my accent. I can tell you that for sure. Because me dad, me dad talked it out to me when I went home. Came back and he was like, are you my son? And I was like, yeah.
See, and we're just fascinated. We'd have you read a dictionary to us and we'd be fascinated with your-
You wouldn't understand most of the words that I say.
Well, great job, you guys. We're so proud. Thank you for the presentation.
Also, I want to commend Russell Grove. He was the NWAAC Women's Coach of the Year.
Come on up, Al.
Men's team had a 2.9 GPA and the women's team were academic All-American with 3.13 GPA, too. So, they're doing in the classroom as well, too. So, proud of all of them, as well as all of us, our student athletes. Their team GPA for the program was 2.89. So, not too bad of a year.
Now, Al, you know what? There's a lot of good leadership in your division, starting with you. So, thank you for that. The athletes obviously appreciate it and we appreciate all of the wonderful championships and we have such pride in them. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Okay, so we'll go back to our constituent reports and we will go to Staff Assembly. Kathy Sparks?
Good evening, Trustees and President McLennan. I cannot beat or top the athletes, but I will say it is so nice to have the kids back in school. Very nice. So, Staff Assembly has not met yet. The last meeting was in May. And back in May, President McLennan, he provided an update for us and he was kind enough to tell us we were all going to get step increases. So, thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. And then during that meeting, we also provided all the staff awards to each individual that won an award. We had a pretty fun picnic, August 1st. So, that was nice. And our next meeting is September 13th. So, I will have more to report then.
Thank you so much. Board, any questions for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to Joe Jacoby, Faculty Assembly.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, guests. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak with you. It's my honor to get to serve as Faculty Assembly Chair this year. As much as that sounds like an honor, what it really means is that I was nominated and everybody said, okay, him. I don't have to do it. But that doesn't mean that I'm thrilled to be able to represent a group of people whom I have a great deal of admiration and respect for. So, at our meeting, we met already and there was a question about on-campus hours and their relationship to recruiting. And so, we're going to be forming a committee to explore how that works and see if there's any there there. So, we'll be, we'll be just looking at that. We got to receive updates on the new, on the testing center from Eric Kirkoff and how that's going to work. It looks like it's going to be a wonderful asset for us teaching students. There have been some changes there and he seems quite passionate and I think it's going to be a great resource and really contribute to student success. And then we got to meet Diane Rems and she talked to us about her planning activities and it was a chance for us to get to meet her and open up some lines of communication. So, we didn't have a huge amount on the agenda being our first meeting, but that sort of sums up what we did.
That's great. Sounds like a great kickoff.
Yeah.
Board, Joe?
Joe, I watched your welcome back video for the faculty.
Was that supposed to be super secret?
You did a great job on it.
Thank you. Brian Haniford deserves a lot of credit for that. That was his idea to say, we should do this, but we didn't really know what we were doing till we did it.
It was very good.
Great. Board, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And that takes us to Jessica Adams with the Senate.
Thank you, Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests. I am looking forward to this year as being the College Senate Chair. We have not met just yet. Tomorrow is our first meeting. We have, I thought that we had a slim agenda, but I feel like you guys are right there with us. We don't have any new or old business. So, basically, we are going to introduce ourselves. We have a lot of new faces on Senate on both staff, faculty, and student sides. So, it'll be really great on meeting each other, introducing each other, and learning where we all live. Because we all have our own spheres of understanding and all worlds, even when it's faculty versus staff. So, we're really excited to meet each other. We're also going to do an orientation to Senate duties processes. What does it mean being on College Senate? What are our bylaws? What's our purpose? And then we've got a short little video- short little video to just remind some people on the Robert's Rules of Order, so it'll be a little fun, just kinda getting to know each other, doing some housekeeping before we get into the year, and that is my report.
That's great. Board, questions, comments? Well, I'd just like to say that I can feel the energy, and, and so good of you to take your new colleagues under your wing, and kinda show them NIC, and what all of you do here, that'll set the tone for them, it'll be huge, so it's exciting, I hope you had a great summer, got to see some of you at the Foundation Gathering, and that was nice and enjoyable, thank you, President, for hosting. And anyway, thank you for the wonderful reports, and we're ready to start a great year. Okay, before I get to the President's Report, I feel like I must thank IT, thank you, IT, you've taken, taken care of your Board by giving us technology, and it's taken me a little bit of time to get used to it, but I really appreciate it, so, just wanted to make sure we did that little shout-out, that, that was wonderful. President's Report.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees and guests, audience, I just wanna quick comment on the constituent leaders that you have here, now that I'm entering my third year here at North Idaho College, and have worked with several folks, and they've all been wonderful in their roles, I just, the energy that you're feeling, it really is there, this is, this is a great group of leaders, they're committed, they're, they're focused on the work that they, they have to do, and Peter, right there among them, I mean, they're all very responsible in their roles, and I honestly think we're gonna be able to do some good work together this year, so I just wanna commend all of them for stepping up and taking on these leadership roles.
Great.
I also wanna thank Chair Wood and Trustee Dunlap for attending our convocation on Tuesday, August 14th, and then sharing all your words of support, you both did a terrific job of helping set the tone for the day and for the semester, our, one of our speakers, Peter, I thought also did a really nice job with his comments to the students, as did Corey Jepson, our alumni, who I thought gave a very motivating, I wasn't, I should've been more prepared, but I wasn't quite prepared for what he was gonna do, and I thought he did a wonderful job, especially of helping all of us in a service role, understand the impact that we have on the people who we touch in our lives, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. At that convocation, I talked a little bit about some of the big rocks, what I call big rocks, that we have in front of us this year, that we're gonna be picking up and moving throughout the academic year, of course, the cultivate planning process, and we begun active, activating the membership of those, what we're calling implementation teams, that process is underway, we are gearing up for the seven-year evaluation self-study process, that'll take us through the spring of 2020, when we have a campus visit, and again, that process has begun, committees are forming, and it's ready to launch, or getting ready to launch. Talked about the implementation, a lot of implementation this year, guided pathways, and all the work that's gone into that, mentioned a little bit about the athletic expansion study, and informed the community that this would be an engaged, involved process that we're gonna do with good, informed data, to get us to recommendations for the Board of Trustees in March, and then I gave an update on the, what's happening in the Headland, Headland Building, and, and at some point here in the next month or two, I, I will put that on the, like to get that on the agenda to bring the Board up to speed, we've really covered a lot of ground, both, not just in terms of the funding, but also the activity that's happening there, and it's starting to, it's, it's, it's working, and I'll be reporting on that. We're off to a really good beginning this year, you're gonna hear about enrollment from Grayden and Diana, I hear a little bit later, they're gonna talk about some of things that we've been doing, but I just wanna, while I have the floor, I just wanna say that what I've noticed this year is, we're starting to turn the corner on, on some of the, the key onboarding, student services, advising, the way we're bringing students into our community, and how we're getting them off to a good start, I have, I have heard countless stories this fall, of individual faculty and staff who've gone out of their way to do extraordinary things for students, and I have personally witnessed many of those, you know, myself, and, and, and it's not just people being nice to people, it's people working together, that maybe in the past, because they weren't structured to be as collaborative as they are now, there might've been some cross finger pointing, and, you know, not my problem kinda stuff, and our folks are owning all of this, and, and I, and you're gonna, I don't know, you can't make a direct connection with the enrollment numbers that you're gonna see tonight, but I have to believe that, and I know it's had an impact. This last weekend, I'm sorry, Grayden, I know you're probably gonna talk about this, how many students did we see?
About three hundred.
So, we, we had staff and faculty here all weekend, literally onboarding from somebody who just decided that day they wanna go to college, and getting them all the way through the process by the end of the...
Oh my gosh.
And, and, and every one of them left very well-served, so, I just wanna commend everybody who has had a role in that, which is everybody, and I wanna thank them for buying into the work that we're doing, both on the planning, but also on getting our systems and processes pointed, as, as I said in the convocation, this relentless focus on the student experience, how important that is, and that that's gotta really guide us to what we're doing, and, and I think we're, I know we're starting, I'm starting to see that happen, so I just wanna express my appreciation.
Fantastic.
This late July, we hosted, I hosted, the first-ever Idaho Consortium, or Community College Consortium President's Retreat, it was a two-day retreat here, you have a copy of the agenda at your places, and I will provide more of an update in terms of some of the outcomes with that, at a, at a future time. But it was a, as, as we've been working over the last several years to try to become more of a collective of community colleges, this was an important step to actually get us to sit down together and look at the, the big issues that are facing community colleges, the challenges and the opportunities that we have, and to start agreeing on some movement, and how we're gonna deal with those things, and so you'll see on the agenda, I don't think any of these items would be a surprise to you, one of the interesting things that we did was we extended an invitation to the two gubernatorial candidates, Brad Little and Paulat Jordan, and we're very grateful that Lieutenant Governor took us up on our offer, and came and spent an hour with us, and, you know, we weren't really looking for him to say, "This is the direction I'm going with higher education," because, you know, it's not the appropriate time for him to do that, but it was a good, engaging conversation, our goal was to have him take, and, and he knows a lot about us already, but to take yet another step in developing a relationship, having him understand the segment of higher education that we are, and some of the challenges and issues and opportunities that we have, and how we can serve the, the state with, with policy and funding help from, from the state. So, it's a good conversation, it was, it was a good, good first round. We hosted in early August, earlier this month, a leadership summit, I mentioned that this was gonna be happening on suicide prevention, it was a half-day summit, we had representation from all five of the north, northern counties, I don't know, what are you, 100 people, 80?
We had 92.
92 people, from all kinds of agencies and organizations, from education, government, healthcare, and so on, and I wasn't, I wasn't able to stay for the very end of it, but I, I do know that what it, some of the outcomes of that was a very, just that communication itself is going to make a difference, there's a strengthened, strengthened commitment for collaboration and information sharing, we have an existing Suicide Prevention Action Network in North Idaho, and I, I believe their numbers, it's a volunteer organization, and I'm pretty sure out of this summit, that their numbers are gonna go, go up, and that that, that organization and effort is gonna be strengthened. And then, Tim Gerlitz, who really spearheaded the whole event, Director of Counseling, this summer, earlier this summer, he became a Certified Crisis Response Trainer, and NIC will be, we are, one of our commitments is that we're gonna provide training throughout the North Region on suicide crisis response to a variety of organizations and, and providers, so, this is group is gonna, the summit, this group is gonna continue to work on this issue, it was a good meeting, I think there was a good positive outcome out of it, and, you know, we'll see where it goes. Attended the State Board of Education meeting last week, and wasn't really a lot for us on the agenda, but we were there, and that's important that we were there, one of the things I do wanna report, though, is that the outcome-based funding concept, it's more than a concept, was approved by the State Board, and what that means, and, and what I, what I want the Board to understand, is that, that means that we will not be submitting, allowed to submit line items, funding requests this year. And the total amount for the outcomes-based funding is $16 million, of which $11 million is for the colleges and universities, $3 million for the community colleges, and $2 million for career and technical education, and that's, that's pretty good, as we've been doing the, running the numbers on historical data, we would, we would fare pretty well with that relative to what our ask was with the line items, I think we'd be, we'd be in the ballpark. Challenge is gonna be that, while the State Board's approved that, the Legislature hasn't agreed to fund anything, and, and now we've taken out the pipeline of line items going in, and so, if EWA, the Enrollment Workload Adjustment Act is preserved, that's, will be a problem from a funding perspective, we could go back into the clawback, you know, scenario, but more troubling is that if, if we are committed to this outcomes-based funding formula, and it doesn't get funded, then that could act as a clawback too, because now you're with flat money, re-appropriating money based on, on outcomes, so, there's a lot of movement on this, the, the actual metrics of the outcome are, are still a little bit soft, although they feel pretty firm to me, and, but we'll be watching this, but the, the die has been cast, yes?
Rick, have they been able to differentiate the criteria for funding between the universities and the community colleges, because previously, there was an indication that graduation rates would be the primary metric, which favors the universities, whereas what we do is many, many different things that have outcomes based on what students achieve, whether it's certificates, or achieving an individual education plan, or, or whatever, rather than just graduates.
So, two years ago, in this conversation, that's exactly where we were, it was a pretty blunt instrument, it did not, in, in my and others' opinion, yours included, take those things into consideration, trying to, and then you had the Governor's Task Force on Higher Education, of which outcomes-based funding was a big piece, that was one of the four areas of that task force, and, you know, there was some frustration on the, on the Community College President's part, of trying to have, there's a lot of education to have them understand our differences, and one of the ways I've characterized it is, you know, the, the bandwidth for the four years of admissions is pretty well-defined, it's pretty narrow, they, they, they pretty much know what they're getting, and the students who go there know what they're getting, and there's some variability to that, you know, our bandwidth is like this, and in many cases, we have, we have people who, in some ways, didn't wanna be here, are only coming to us to maybe check it out and see if it's gonna work, and, and so, and we have everybody along the continuum of where they are for preparation, so to your point, you know, working, different academic abilities, different purposes for being here, both in terms of program and time, I think we're further along in having the formula recognize that, so for example, if somebody leaves shy of 30 credits now, we will, we would, we would be counted, if one is the value, we would get 40% for that effort, if they earn a one-year certificate, we would get 60% of that, and if they transfer shy of a associate's degree, we would get 80% of that funding, after that 30-credit mark, and if they earn associate's degree, we'd get the one. So, it's not, and there's a lot, there's some variability in there for what they're calling a high-demand or high-need categories that are still yet to be defined, I mean, there's some definition around them, there's a, there's a Hispanic student metric, there's a STEM metric, and, and some of those sorts of things, but we're still in the same bucket with the other four in terms of, their, their, their weights are a little bit different, so if they have somebody that earns less than a certificate, their value is 10, where our value is 40. I'm trying to remember the values as I'm talking, but I think that's, that's pretty accurate, so, they're, you know, they're, we're, we're really, and we're in the conversation, but we're not driving the decisions on the conversation, but there has been some movement, to answer your question.
We should be fairly comparable with the other community colleges, we're all doing the same thing.
Well, and so that's, that gets to another point, that, again, this is getting at this community college working together, it's really important that, that we agree that we're not gonna game the system against each other, and if there's a best practice for capturing these rewards, that they're consistent across the four colleges, and that starts with the Presidents agreeing, 'cause the last thing we wanna do is start an arms race on, on gaming, that, you can do it two ways, you can agree to do it through a principal, sharing the tactics, or you can go into the arms race mode, either way, you're all gonna end up equally doing the same thing, it's just how do you feel about how you got there, so...
Sure, yeah.
We're, we've agreed to do it, keep it on the high road at this point, so...
It's quite surprising that nobody would wanna see line items, they don't wanna know how we're spending our money, apparently.
Well, if this works, and if it gets funded, it does give us more flexibility with respect to how we deal with those, those line items, so, for, for this year, we would take the line item requi, if, if this were funded, and going forward, we would take our line items that we submitted this year, and we would apply this, this money, the way the formula worked out, in the, in the pro forma, it was about $900,000, I think, of new money for North Idaho, we, going back to the leveling, how we all do this, we auto-award degrees, the other three do not auto-award degrees, so our numbers are gonna be higher, because we auto-award degrees, when they start auto-awarding degrees, that $900,000 is gonna probably calibrate down to about $650,000, $700,000, or something like that. And, oh, Chris, do you wanna add anything on that? Okay.
Trustee Howard, you had a question?
I get the impression from your discussion, Rick, excuse me, this formula is still evolving?
So, the, the State Board, the way the motion was presented and passed, was they are not approving the specific metrics yet, they're approving the concept, and that that's where all of their eggs are going for funding requests with the Legislature. So, there's still some soft cement, but I, my, candidly, I mean, my, my read was that I think these things are getting pretty solid as they exist now, I don't know what will change, or what mechanism would cause something to change in the formula right now, I don't, is that pretty accurate? Yeah?
And I guess maybe that's the answer to my question, my next question anyway, which is, if it was still evolving, is there a process by which it's evolving, but apparently not?
There is a process, I don't know that the process, it would allow us to have the kind of influence that I think we would wanna have.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I've been concerned about, I guess from the time we first started talking about this, this whole funding process, is that community colleges serve a very wide spectrum of, of needs in a community that aren't reflected in just graduation rates, or success rates, as we call them, and that sort of thing, I mean, we have a lot of adult education, and we have specialized programs, and this and the other things, so, we've, we've fallen to a much larger service area than the four years do, and apparently, that's, that's not gonna be recognized in terms of any of these funding issues.
Well, and in addition to that, Chair, or, Trustee Howard?
Thanks.
Former Chair, sure, we are also, we'd like to be nimble local... We are also, we'd like to be nimble locally. With our local control, a lot of our line items are specific to our needs locally. And without the ability to do that, that kind of cuts us off at the knees in some respects.
Well, it just changes, so two, two comments. One of the, in my opinion, one of the relatively good things about this is that our pot of money, if it gets funded, we're only competing against people like us. We're not competing, we're not competing against the four-year institutions. So whatever the best practices are, whatever we can do to make us the best in the game on the metric of completion, we're, you know, that's going to motivate us, incentivize us to do that. With respect to how that money, so if it's new money, if it's this 17, no, $16 million, if it does get funded, do you recall the total amount of the line item requests that we put in, we submitted back in May or June?
It would have been around $500,000.
So we submitted about $500,000, $600,000 worth of line item requests to a specific need, needs. And if this were to work out the way it was, we would be, we'd be at least there and maybe better. And so it might change the way now that we, we decide, the timing and the process of how we decide to deal with new money for specific needs. But all things being equal, if the formula is funded and, and the way it looks, we would be okay. We'd have more control, actually, so.
Well, we like that. Board, any further questions on that? Did you have further reports?
Just one other thing. I, we're meeting next week with Ryan Davis, a group of us here in the college, the Director of the Boys and Girls Club, Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene. And we've been looking at how we can actually get actively connected with that organization and start working with kids in earlier grades and getting our advising folks connected to them and starting a, a college, call it a pilot if you want, but it's a group of folks. And Ryan is really interested in working with us in NIC. Last year, we, we began offering a scholarship to this, to the, to senior coming out of that program, coming to NIC. And this year, we're going to expand that scholarship activity a little bit more. So we're going to be exploring some ways to really connect on an, on an academic preparation way with Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, that's, they're a great organization.
Happy to report about that. We're meeting next week, but there'll be something to talk about.
Awesome.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for the President? Well, before I continue, I, we do have a guest. And I didn't know he was staying for the meeting. We have a city councilman with us tonight. Yes, looking right at you, Councilman Gookin. If you wouldn't mind standing and waving hello. Thank you for coming to our meeting. You're always welcome. Thank you. That takes us to, next on the agenda is our KTEC report. Trustee Banducci.
Thank you. We met earlier today. And a few things I'd like to report. We, there are a few slots left out there, but the enrollment is quite full. The welding program and the nursing program have wait lists at this time. An item of interest, down in Lewiston, they're going to be building a CTE school right next door to LCSC. And apparently it's off of the example of what we've done up here. So they're excited about that down there. I had mentioned earlier that at the regional skills competition, that several of our students had done very well. One had placed first in the carpentry division and one had placed first in the collision repair. We also had some seconds and thirds. But the folks that placed first get to go to the nationals competition, which is a pretty big deal. And interestingly enough, they have to fundraise to get there. Although one of them, I understand, one did win a scholarship at the regional tournament, which did assist him. So that was great. Anyway, back at the national competition, the freshman, that was the autobody, out of 48, placed 11th, which is outstanding. And the, the young man that will be coming to NIC, or is at NIC now, that was in the carpentry program, placed second. And apparently he and the, and another student were clearly the cream of the crop. The two of them just shined and he, so I don't know where the other gentleman was from, but he got second. Apparently, he got a number of job offers on the spot. But, so anyway, second at nationals, a really big deal. And, and he's now attending NIC.
It's a great, I remember seeing it in the Coeur d'Alene press. That was a great story.
Yeah. And, let's see. Someone asked about the Milrite program that is starting up. It's going to be in one session, an afternoon session. They have 17 slots for that. That's in a partnership with Idaho Forest Group. They're very excited about getting that program started. And the collision repair is running two shifts now, morning and an afternoon. And they can accommodate 17 in each. So that's expanded. I think, I think that's probably it unless there's any questions.
Board, any questions on KTEC? Well, we're excited. Once again, hoping that all of those students transfer right to NIC. And at some point, you'll bring us some of those numbers from last year.
You know what? I have a note on that. I don't have anything for you now, though.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your report. That takes us to old business, our information item, our update on our athletics expansion study. President McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Wood. I'm going to ask Grayden Stanley to, I believe you have a handout at your places also that describes the process, but Grayden's going to walk you through it.
I'd love to say I put together a slideshow that had music, but that's not mine.
You're just better than you know you are. Here comes tech support.
Chair, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and other guests here. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the athletic program expansion. I did put in front of you tonight the charge and information that I presented to the President and President's Cabinet and wanted to share that with you tonight. I've taken excerpts from that and included as a part of a slide to here. Thank you. There we go. So want to go back. You know, you were the ones that in June, at the board meeting in June, asked for the institution to take a look at a potential expansion of the athletic program. The President came back from that meeting and asked if I would be willing to chair that committee. I'm certainly honored to do that. We have put together a committee that's already begun a bit of work and will be expanding that soon. You might know from the President, too, we recently conducted a Title IX review of the athletic program. That was something we did over the course of this last year, completed it and gave, gave our findings. It was a work that was well-done and the outcomes were ones that you would be pleased with. That committee will continue on and be a part of the work that we're going to do with Athletic Expansion Committee as well. The members of that committee include myself, Al Williams, Alex Harris, Chris Martin, Don Milliken. Don, Don is one of the coaches representatives, along with Ken Thompson from the men's soccer program. We've recently, and you saw in the information here, talked about reaching out to faculty representatives. Joe Jacoby has agreed to serve on that committee as well. And he and I have talked about another representative from Faculty Assembly who will be joining us, Peter Soderberg, will be representing the students on that committee. And then I talked to Diana today and she's going to be serving us in terms of some of our data gathering and surveying work that we intend to do. So those are the, the members of our committee. And let me take you a bit of the process and what we put together. So our project scope and timeline is up here and also in the handout that was given to you. Says what we identified as our goals to take a look at. What specific sports are students in the community interested in participating in and supporting, which align with other colleges in the NWHAC? What are the estimated costs and revenue anticipated from those proposed sports? What's the estimated impact of the proposed sports on college enrollment? And those committee meetings will begin this month in September with initial recommendations to be made by March of 2019. In the opening slide, you may have noted a lot of what guides our work are those goals that we follow through our mission. Our five core themes, of course, as we look at student success, educational excellence, community engagement, stewardship and diversity. Then the work that was done in institutional optimization that you're familiar with. And then certainly all the work we're doing currently in strategic planning. Those will be our guideposts as we move this work forward. What we intend as deliverables that will come from this committee are the anticipated enrollment and financial outcomes of increasing the number of intercollegiate sports, providing that information to our President's Cabinet and to the Board. The specific sports to be offered to female and male students, you would know through the U.S. Department of Federal Title IX regulations, it's part of what we looked at in our review, that the participation numbers have to reflect the numbers based on gender that are enrolled here at the institution. For us, it's a few more females than it is male. By percentage, we would do the same thing and are doing the same thing in our current athletic programs. In the expansion, we'd have to keep those same ratios in mind that reflect our student body here. And then finally, the proposed timeline for implementation of the recommendations. Those would be the three deliverables that our intent is to get back to President's Cabinet and to the Board. Some of the assumptions that we made as a result of this work is that if this is in the best interest of, of the college, it would allow us to increase student enrollment, to enhance student retention and completion. It probably doesn't surprise you to know, and you heard some of that from our athletic director tonight, often because of the work they do, the character of the students, the cohorting that's a part of athletics, the athletic perfor, or excuse me, the academic performance of those groups are often higher than, than similar groups. To increase community support, to be financially viable, to improve student access and diversity, to model best practices in student athletic programs, and of course, to meet Title IX requirements. So that's where we're at. That's the charge that's been given to us, the direction we intend to pursue. The committee that will be in place and will be meeting on a regular basis between now and, and March. We'll give you updates along the way and look forward to presenting our recommendations and findings to you no later than March to President's Cabinet and then to the Board.
So Grayden, a couple of comments on that. I would hope you could at least take back to the committee when, when we asked for this in June. I was very specific and I think the Board was in agreement about baseball. At least let them know what we're interested in. And Trustee Banducci brought forward women's wrestling. Specifically, I would hope we could at least look at those two programs and see if they meet this criteria. The other question I have, I appreciate process so much. I understand we have to have process. And you've done a really good job with this. I'm trying to be not overeager, but does it have to take until March before we could get back? Why so long?
Chair, Chair Wood, I learned a long time ago to, let's see, under, under-promise and over-deliver. So I'm hoping that that's our date. That was based on budget. So for us to, any kind of implementation that we might have in the next year certainly had budget implications. As we are approving budget in March, April, we would need to have it back in March. So that's really the latest timeout for us. There's a lot of work that's going to be done. Some of that in terms of what's of interest to students, what's of interest to our community, requires some of the survey work that we'll do, not only here on campus, but at our high schools and in our community. So it will be somewhat time-consuming. I wouldn't be surprised that our findings might be able to be delivered prior to that time. But certainly March, given the budget implications that it would have for the institution to support these programs.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I, I share your desire to, I don't want to say expedite, but certainly do this in as timely a manner as possible. But I do have an additional concern maybe. And I hope I articulate this well, because this is not a reflection upon you, Grayden, or your team. But what I'm reticent is to get to the end of this and it's March 1st and you say, there it is. What I would probably rather have is some sort of interim briefings or process or something so that we can kind of see how this is going or how this is heading. Because I should think that we as a group, the Board of Trustees, would like to be able to have some input and a little bit of guidance and some of the direction as this unfolds. And there may be some things that you guys are working on where we may go, you know, maybe a little more this way or maybe a little more this way, rather than a, oh, here it is and we got to kind of go here. And we do have the budget implications. And if we want to get scheduled into the league, there's certain timelines for, certainly for the fall sports, if there was any included, you know, there's those sorts of things. So I'm, somehow I, I want the trustees to be able to have some sort of a play in this, I guess. I don't know how else to describe it.
President McLennan will comment.
Thank you for that comment and question about timeline. So just a couple, a couple of things. So to your question, Trustee Banducci, if you look back over the two years that I've been helping with policy and these kinds of questions, it's been my practice and intention to make sure the Board has appropriate input and touchpoints and engagement along the way. I don't, I heard you say that and we talked about it, that there's going to be a lot of different ways. To your point, point about baseball and women's wrestling, we've already heard that that's an interest. So that's already on the list. So it's not, you know, this is really, this is a wide-open process. To the timeline, to, to do this credibly and, and bring the institution along with whatever these recommendations are, are going to look like, we really do have to do it well. We are also launching a self-study this year, implementing a massive planning activity. And so those big rocks that I'm talking about, those are truly big rocks. And a lot of the same people who are going to be doing this work are going to be doing some of that other work as well, in addition to all the other work that they're doing to run the institution. So, you know, I would resist putting pressure on the process to get it into too short of a timeframe and break some of these other things or let some of these other things go. I think the March timeframe, we, implementing a new athletic program, even if we made a decision today, there's timeframe issues that we have to deal with to become eligible. The league's got to let us in. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that we've got to plan for to do that. I don't think that a month or two is going to throw us off any meaningful implementation of a, of a new sport, if that's the conclusion that we reach and the, and the desire of the Board.
Okay.
You know, if I may.
Trustee Banducci.
I, I agree with what you're saying and I understand it. I do think that some of the sports, fortunately, and depending on ones we look at, because they are a little more plug-and-play and we already have the facilities, it'd be pretty easy to, to initiate and to implement. Probably the longest pole in the tent is the baseball, but even then, we could potentially use the American Legion field or, you know, maybe a partnership with one of the high schools. Or there are other possibilities there until we were able to build our own field, if we were so inclined to do so, or wherever that might be here in, in the area. You know, there are some co-op and partnerships that we can do. Again, we don't even have tennis courts on the campus anymore. So we may be, if we looked at tennis, for example, we may co-op with the city. And there are a lot of nice tennis, tennis court facilities throughout the area. You know, so I mean, and, and track and field, same idea there. We'd probably be co-op with somebody. Across country, they can just go run through the woods. So, you know, run them around Tubbs Hill a few times. But, so all of these, fortunately, if we can get some co-op in and some agreements in place with the, you know, District 271 potentially, most likely. And most of them can be turned on pretty quick. Got to find some coaches, but I think that's, Al can do that. So fortunately, we may be viable to start competing in the, in the 2019, 2020 year, I think, potentially. At least with some of the potential sports, I think. You know, do, will the league not let us in, scheduling?
Is there a waiver for that by chance?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Board, do you have any comments on any of this? Well, again, not to want to be too eager, but we're eager. So we'll follow your lead. And if it comes in earlier, then that gives us more planning time. So, thank you for your hard work. You have great people on the committee.
Thank you.
And I, I look forward to the results. And I look forward to the results.
We're anxious to do this work. Thank you very much, Chair and trustees.
Thank you. All right, under old business, we will get a construction update from Chris Martin. Thank you, Chris.
If we can't get away, we'll appeal.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update today on some of the projects that are happening across campus. I just want to share, I guess more than anything else, just kind of a pictorial journal of where we've been since we last met. With the North Idaho Collaborative Education Facility, as you drove in, hopefully you saw progress has occurred. In June, at the last meeting, when you were on campus, we were removing the timber building, and that has occurred. So as a kind of walk through here, April and May was really dedicated to demolition and soil removal work. And so that was our, our April and May was really focused on that. And then since the summer has started, a lot of progress has occurred. June and July was really focused on underground fittings and the stem walls for this project. And it's, it has felt very slow in coming. And they've been working really hard, and a lot of the work that's been occurring, we can't see at ground level. And so they are at the point now where it's going to take off. And so August has really been focused on preparing foundation and the utility slab work and laying the block. And so as we come into the next three week schedule, it's really going to change shape here. Right now, as you drive through the site, you'll realize that some of the stairwell and wall pores are occurring. There are some structures you can see now, and so there's a great example of the wall. Over the next three weeks, waterproofing and insulating the foundation, backfilling, and then working on the underground MEP work and utilities. And then they're actually going to prep and pour eight grids in the next three weeks. And so several people have asked me, this weather has been fantastic. And so where are we at? And are we going to get this dried in? And we are still on schedule to do that, to get it dried in. We're all patiently waiting for the excitement to occur now that we're at the foundation coming in and the walls will be going up. We are still on schedule for substantial completion in March, with a month to six weeks after that for our prep work and IT work. As I look at Ken, we've got him scheduled out. Gary Stark is the lead from NIC, working with DPW on this project. It has gone really, really well. Our contractors on this particular project, the submittals are coming in really, really quickly. The RFIs are coming in really quickly, and that's always a really good sign. So next month, I expect as you drive to your meeting, you'll see some dramatic changes as we look at the NICE facility.
Chris, I appreciate you taking the photos to show us, and yeah, we're excited to watch it come together. It does, it did seem kind of slow this summer, but you've explained what's really been happening.
They've been working.
Yeah. Board, any questions on that? Yeah, trustee Banducci.
Two questions, Chris. With the March timeline to be substantially completed, you said a month to six weeks for Ken and the gang to do their thing. My brain's working, that puts us somewhere about mid-May. Then are we opening it up for the summer term?
We're planning on opening it up for fall at this moment, but moving the Student Services Group in as soon as it makes sense with the schedules to move the Student Services Group in. If it's online and we have summer classes that need to be scheduled there, we absolutely could do that, but we've committed to fall.
Okay. Second question, how's our budget looking?
The budget's looking really, really good. This project came in underbid, under budget in our bid, which was very surprising, and I'm being-
Changed orders? Have we been doing okay?
We're doing, we're doing really well at this moment. What we're all hedging on is some of the economic turmoil that we're under right now, not letting go of that contingency fund as prices are in a lot of fluctuation at the moment.
Most of our steel had already been procured though, right?
It is, yep.
Okay.
So we got hit with a change there, but we've got it taken care of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris, I also wanted to commend you and your staff for what you've done on the BLM property. Once we acquired it from the city, I took a walk with the mayor, and we walked the length of it, and that was right after we got it, so it wasn't looking so great. But I guess that was your staff that went in and bulldozed it and got it ready for seed?
The city actually managing that project.
Oh, thank you, city.
Took care of the removal of the blue building.
Dan, thank you.
The board participated in cost sharing with the city to remove that.
Yeah.
As part of the agreement, but Cannon Hill was actually the group that did that. They did a fantastic job.
Yeah, it looks much better, and I see that you've cleaned up some of the vehicles that are down there.
Absolutely.
And since it is an entrance to the city, I appreciate the work on that. And I am just, since we're here talking, can you share your plans for what kind of landscaping? I thought you were looking at that.
We are, we're working with the city on this project, and I've been in touch with Mr. Thymasen about their plans for that. There's a timing issue here where the city has contractors already working on the Four Corners project, and if we can work on this quickly, there's some cost savings here that we can, we can work together on. So at this moment in time, working with Tree Campus USA, the student involvement, seeing if we can get different species of trees in that corridor and provide some educational opportunities for people to learn more about trees that are native to North Idaho and different variations, as well as if you're not familiar with the work that the geology program has done, and Bill Richards specifically, of placing different boulders around the project that have different geological forms and strata so that it can be incorporated in. So there's a geology walk that's already been incorporated in some of the works around campus, the rec center specifically. If we can continue that on the path, we're trying to create that educational connection with that project.
I'm so pleased to hear that. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Chris, do you want to just talk a little bit about what that might look like in terms of a student experience or somebody who might engage with that?
So I'm probably not the best person to approach this, but Bill Richards and his group, he's been working really hard on, students can actually, with their iPhone, take a picture of the rocks that are in front of the student rec center and engage with them in a virtual reality form. Now, I have never played Pokemon Go, but my understanding is, is this takes the same technology from Pokemon Go, if you will, and allows students to actually pick that formation up and turn it around and engage with that rock and learn about the specific strata and geological components in that particular piece. And so if we can continue that across campus, that's been our goal. That's being discussed to implement in the NICE project as well, so that essentially anyone could download this app and really learn about the geological formations, a lot of them native to our region. But we're working on being able to bring in some other unique specimens so that students can see different types of geological formations in real form, but also interact with them in educational form. And I have to say, Bill Richards gets the credit for this. It's an amazing project.
You know, I am so, like I said, I'm so pleased to hear this. We had talked about trying to do something with the property where we won't be building on it, but we want it to be educational in nature, and so I appreciate your work on the different tree species. Some of the ideas also was to make sure we had good signage that recognizes NIC. I don't know where you're at in that process, but I trust you're looking at it.
We are, and we have great signage now with the monument signage that's there. So it appears as if it's NIC now, because the monument signs are actually on the BLM corridor land, but working with the city how we can partner with that.
Wonderful. Board, any questions on that piece of property?
No, maybe just ask you to clarify, because quite frankly, one of Chris's questions confused me a little bit. We didn't acquire that property.
That's correct.
I mean, this is just an agreement with the city that we have engaged in to develop the property and to use it, and at some point in time, hopefully to acquire it, correct?
That's correct.
It's a lease situation, correct?
It's not really a lease, I don't think. I think that was allowed.
Right.
It will eventually come into the hands of NIC.
That's the hope. That was my other question. Has there been any movement on that? Because there was a suggestion that we moved toward asking Congress to deed that over to the city so we could actually acquire title to it. Do you know if there's been any?
There is not, to my knowledge, been any movement on that at this time.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Any other questions, comment, Ward?
Chair Wood, if you would allow, I've got a couple of more products just to give you a brief update on to keep the board kind of in the know. Part of the other piece of this with the North Idaho Collaborative Education Facility is developing the parking lot that's just to the north of that. And so you might remember, with the PUD, we signed with the city, we agreed to develop all of that property in due time. And so this project has been funded by the Permanent Building Fund and Department of Public Works. Right now, it's all fenced off. We will do the concrete work, some of the landscaping and lighting during the fall, and we will reopen that parking lot up when we get the base layer in for student parking over the winter. And then when the asphalt plants turn back on in the spring, we will go in and asphalt that parking lot. But it will add approximately 140 parking spots adjacent to the new North Idaho Collaborative Education Facility, and while now, students have been parking in that for years, it is coming back online this winter.
Oh, that's good news.
With that as well, you may be aware, the Permanent Building Fund actually gave us funding to do a Schuler refresh. And so the only complaint that I've ever heard Joe Jacoby make has to do with the seating in Schuler Auditorium and the fact that I think it's older than me. And so this will allow us to replace all the seats in Schuler Auditorium. It's a permanent building fund project, and so that's happening over the summer, not to conflict with Joe's awesome performances and programs. And then also with the funding that we received late last fiscal year, there was an additional appropriation for permanent building fund projects. And so we're working right now, the engineer has been engaged for the refresh of all the mechanical in Boswell Hall. And so Boswell Hall still has all original mechanical equipment in it. We have to turn the air units off to teach in some of those classrooms. This will take care of that program, really modernize it, make it much more efficient. We just wanted to give you an update that we are working on the pre-planning for that project as well.
That's wonderful. Trustee Murray.
How many seats are in Boswell, and how many will be? And what are they going to do with all those old seats?
I don't have a plan for the old seats, but the new seats there are approximately 1,200 seats in Boswell Hall. We're not losing any seating in this process. We'll replace the same seating that we have now, as far as numbers. Do you, Chair Wood, trustee Murray, would you have an interest in an organization receiving those seats?
No, I just wondered.
If you take them out, we can make a deal.
Free to a good hole.
Thank you. That concludes my report. If there's no questions, thank you.
Thank you. It's a very good report. We appreciate it, and we'll look forward to other updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to our new business. Our information item is Fall 2018 Enrollment Update with Grayden Stanley.
Grayden, do you have any handouts for us?
Chair Wood, trustees, trustee Banducci, no, I don't have handouts. I do have a PowerPoint that I'd like to share with you and some other information. And I'd particularly like to share with you my colleague, I think you've had a chance to meet, here, put you over there. Diana Rens, who's our Associate Vice President, Planning Strategy and Effectiveness, and I certainly want to thank her for the data you're about ready to see. She and her staff have done a tremendous job in the time that she's been here, bringing us much more data to work with. We've been in a number of workshops for a couple of months now, utilizing a tool that was underutilized, CROA, and it's providing information to inform our decision-making here like no other time in our history. So we're really grateful for Diana's leadership and her staff coming together and providing that to our campus. So I appreciate Diana joining me here tonight. I want to share with you, before we get to the data, as President McLennan said, some of the efforts that have been made this last year and over the course of the summer, and most recently, to impact our enrollment. You had a chance in June to listen to Dr. Teresa Bornpole talk to you about the NIC Connect Program, that she's done an incredible job leading with the collaboration of many departments here on campus, took our programs and our services out to the high schools, and really impacted the number of students that were entering our system earlier. Over the course of the summer, there's been a huge number of efforts in phone calling and texting and emailing, a number of promotions through social media as well. We've had orientations. You heard credit given tonight to Jessica Adams for her leadership in the inside NIC orientation. We've had a number of those, the most recent one just this past Saturday, and those are outstanding, bringing students to our campus and getting them more familiar with our services. We've also had mandatory advising that was implemented this year, so we spent a lot of time reforming and revitalizing our advising here on campus, and we've had engagement from the Instructional Division with a number of faculty who have been participating in that process all summer. New training that's provided to those folks who want to be involved with advising and have had large numbers up here in the advising center over the course of the, over the course of the summer. We also had the extra hours that the president mentioned. I particularly want to thank everybody involved. It wasn't just advising, it was all the enrollment services offices, it was the Cardinal Card Office, it was the bookstore, it was the business office, it was every service that students might need, from housing just across the board. And I'm so proud of our staff for the extra hours that they put in and the service they provided. We were open last Friday till 6 o'clock. We were open Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. We were open Sunday, 9:00 to 12:00, and then we were open Monday and Tuesday this week until 6:00. Our consumers, our students have taken good use of those hours. As the president mentioned, we had a large number of students come in over the weekend that had a business that they still needed to take care of. So very proud of our faculty and staff, our employees, for putting in the hours and all the work that they did. We just had the day of welcome as well. Asnick puts that together. That was yesterday, and the T-shirt that you saw, Peter modeling tonight, was given out by the students to all the new students here. The president's cabinet was involved in handing those out. We gave a free meal, and then we had a number of services here on campus that were set up to talk to students about what was available to them. It was a real successful day. We moved it indoors because of the smoke and found out that that's probably a good idea. Students and others really enjoyed the environment that we had inside the Student Union Building. So those are some of the efforts that are in place. We'll be focused now on retention, of course, over the course of this semester and the next several semesters, trying to bring these students to meet their goals, working on recruiting already for the next year. But at this time, I'd love to have Diana share with you what some of our numbers look like, with a reminder to you that, a couple of things. First of all, official reporting doesn't occur until October 15th, what's required for us to present to the state. That occurs on October 15th. And a note that these numbers will change pretty dramatically. We're in the first week of school, so there's a lot of adding and dropping yet occurring. And for our dual credit students particularly, dual credit students are still in that process of enrolling. While you'll like those numbers in dual credit, again, those will expand further as students transition back into the high school. So there'll be a number of changes on these. I know that Diana, I'm going to steal this part of what she's going to say to you three times, these are unofficial and tentative at this point. Diana?
Thank you, Grayden. Thank you, Chair Wood, and Board of Trustees, Dr. McLennan, and colleagues and friends. Appreciate this opportunity to share with you a passion for data, to inform our decisions, and to help guide us as we try to make North Idaho College a great place for students. So very briefly, again, thank you to Grayden Stanley for a friendly reminder that these are unofficial numbers. First day of classes, a lot of changes happening, and official census date won't be until October 15th. But again, really appreciate your interest in data. We have been working hard in our area of institutional research for the institution to provide additional expanding reporting with our new reporting tool. This past summer, we had 108 participants in training sessions, and we built 83 new reports. So taking a look today at first day enrollments, you can see a 2018 numbers and 2017 numbers. In this chart, you'll see some bar charts that show academic enrollment of students who are interested in academic transfer programs and enrolling in those programs, as well as dual enrollment students and CTE students or career technical education students. You can see that these numbers are, a similar pattern is demonstrated from 2017 to 2018 that our students enrolled in academic transfer programs. Those numbers are slightly down by 4.41%. Those students enrolled in dual, slightly up by 6.98%, and those students enrolled in career technical education courses, slightly down by 6.55%. Again, these numbers will certainly fluctuate over the next few weeks, and as Grayden mentioned, certainly many of those high schools that we work with for our dual enrollment programs have not yet begun their academic year. And so certainly, we do expect to see an increase, particularly in the dual enrollment. A final slide to share with you tonight, overall view of headcount and credit at this time. Again, numbers from 2017 and 2018, overall headcount slightly down by 2.91% and overall credits slightly down by 1.99%. So as compared to last year at this time. Any questions?
Diana, I think I understand what, why we're slightly down, and I think it's- it's probably the really good employment picture that we see. Maybe you want to expand on that a little bit.
I would say to you that there are perhaps a variety of reasons why we might be down. I would be hesitant to make a final statement on exactly those reasons. But without further research, I'm not certain that I, that that is a primary reason.
Okay.
It may very well be. But we could certainly, that certainly is something to explore further. But without additional, some additional research into a variety of factors, I would be hesitant to exactly say why-
Okay.
-that might be.
Trustee Dunlap.
I've got a question that really pertains to Chris in relation to budget-
Great.
-and enrollment. So Chris, when we were going through the budget planning process, what kind of an enrollment decline were we planning on or making the assumption for preparing our budget?
Chair Wood, trustee Dunlap, we did a 2.5% reduction for the forecast for enrollment.
All right. So you're pretty much right on the money then.
We're, we're actually trending better just because of the mix with the dual and where we came in with academic and CTE at this time.
Great. Trustee Howard.
As I recall, I, I realize these are preliminary numbers, and they're going to change. But as I recall, last year, there was a reduction in the CTE population or enrollment, more than the, the general student population. So we see, in the CTE classes, we seem to be seeing more of a, more of a reduction in enrollment. And I guess I'm wondering if, if there are specific areas or fields within the CTE where we're seeing this? Is it overall?
These slides do not show that level of detail. We do have some other reports that we're exploring that will reveal that kind of information. I would also say that, you know, groups like our Strategic Enrollment Management Team and others across campus or president's cabinet are taking careful look at these numbers. So that certainly is something that we will be looking at, but that is not necessarily represented in the slides. And I can't speak to that off the top of my head. But yes, something that we're looking at.
I guess my understanding that these are preliminary figures, I, I guess really my question is, or request is, that as we get updates, that maybe we could get something a little bit more specific so that can help us understand what the trends are. As we get into a budget discussion later on next year, it would be interesting or nice to have some kind of understanding about these trends, going back a couple of years into different areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. And I, and we understand you have the data and you just need to take the time to go through it. So we will look forward to something a little more specific in the future. But for now, we appreciate the numbers you have given us.
Thank you.
Did you, any comments down here? Trustee Murray?
Just hopeful that we'll see or have a report next month, every, until we get your final. Just give us an update.
We'll be glad to provide that.
Okay. We'll make sure that's on the agenda. All right. No further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you have anything further you wanted to add? Great. No, we're good? All right. Thank you. So that takes us to the Board Chair Report. And I would just mention to all of you that on August 10th, North Idaho College turned 85 years old. And we've been on this location since 1933. Pretty cool. I don't know that anybody in this room's been here that long. But, and I'm not looking at you, Ken, at all. No, he's, he's been a big fan for a number of years, but he's certainly not old enough. It's, it's really tremendous what we've accomplished on this campus. And so I, we didn't really plan a birthday celebration. I don't know that people celebrate 85. But as we soldier on, we'll want to look for those special times to celebrate. And I just hope everyone's excited about all the hard work we've done and all the accomplishments. Other than that, I really don't have, I wanted to mention real quick that I was out at the fair this afternoon. And NIC has a booth out there. And so I would encourage everybody to get out to the fair. It's great fun. I had a corn dog and some ice cream and some fries. And so I got to go home and walk the dog. But the, the fair is a great time. So if you can get out there, get out there. And trustee Banducci, you look like you have something for good of the order.
Two things. One, noticed we lost in post-falls our recordings of our meetings. And I was talking to Andy. So I'd like to ask that leadership see what we can do to restore that to the folks in post-falls so they can see our taped meetings. It's not on the TV out there. Well, it's with the Spectrum, I guess. There's some issue with Spectrum or something. So Corleen can see it, but those of us in post-falls can't. I can't see it anymore.
Laura, you want to speak to that?
I don't see that channel at all.
I think what it relates to, or what you're speaking to, is not necessarily what the opportunity that North Idaho College has, but the, the public access television channel, CDATV, and the franchise agreements with which cities or municipalities would carry that channel or not. So we can look into it. And I do know we have representation on that committee. And we'll see what we can find out for you and then get your report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like as many citizens to be able to see it. Second thing, did we get a big logo at Memorial Field?
Well, that's been promised. And so I'm not letting them off the hook. Go ahead.
Chair Wood, Al, you might want to help me out here. I don't think we're getting a big logo. We're getting a flag?
We will only be able to get a flag with North Idaho College during the season. It won't be there year-round, only during the season. That's how it's working out right now.
So Al, if you don't mind me asking, who are you working with at the city?
Bill Greenwood is a city representative for Parks and Recs. And he's been the main one providing information. We did sit in on the city council meeting when they were discussing the approval of the, of the architectural drawings. And that's when we found out that we would have a flag on there during the season.
So I, I'm on Park and Rec, and I saw the flag, nice flag. But I, I expressed very clearly, and I, and I thought they agreed, that we would like a little something more than that to honor our contribution and certainly the, the home team for the Cardinals. And I suggested at least on the locker room door, there would be a nice big cardinal. And they actually agreed with that. So maybe you could follow up on that?
That they will do. I know there are still some optional construction items they were going to improve later. But overall, expenditure amount has been improved. So we could get some additional signage on the building. But right now, it's a made a flag. But they did possibly offer, we got a sponsor for the sign, because we're not going to put a new scoreboard up there. Our name could possibly go on that as well to as well as the Cardinals.
That would be good. And if we need to provide the nice cardinal for the, for the locker room door, we could probably do that, right?
I'm sure we can find a way with our branding there with the marketing. We can find something that'd be nice and classy to put there for the building year-round.
All right. I'm counting on you to follow up on that.
Bill Greenwood's been real good to work with. So I know he wants that-
He's fantastic.
...every year-round.
He's a good guy.
Winning championships helps too.
Yes, it does.
Don't make Christie pull out her favors now.
Right, right.
Those people.
Any other remarks for the order? Trustee Howard?
I had a, somebody came to me and told me a story I wanted to share with everybody. It just happened within the last couple of days. And it was, it involved a faculty member at the CTE facility out at Parker Tech Center and a new student. And I haven't talked to them, so I'm not going to identify who they are. I don't, I don't know if it'd embarrass them or not. But this was a young woman who was going to enroll in one of the courses or did enroll in one of the courses. It was traditionally a male course. And she was very nervous about going into class amongst all the males on her first day. And apparently, without any, any, any provocation, the instructor started out in the general session by saying, "Look, there'll be no sexual remarks or jokes or references, or you're out of here." And this woman went home and told her mother how relieved she was and how happy she was to be in this class, that there was this, this atmosphere of gender equality that was promoted right from the beginning. And I guess I was really impressed, quite frankly, with the faculty's initiative and understanding that they're not just teaching skills, that they're preparing people for participation in the workplace, including intersponsor, excuse me, interpersonal relations and character, gender equality, and that that faculty sensitivity to the need to enforce and advance gender equality really deserves recognition. So I guess I wanted to thank that individual, even though I can't name them right now, because I think that that was exactly the kind of thing we want to promote here.
Agreed. Great story. I'm glad you shared it. Very nice. Any other remarks?
I'd like to thank President McLennan and Shannon Goodrich for moving us into the digital era.
Yeah, very nice.
Are you in the digital era?
Some of us are.
Who? We're cheers.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Well, some of us.
Some of us.
All right. Who got the biggest shirt?
I only have a large.